We're gonna call this meeting in order to the Plain Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, November 26th. If everybody will stand for the pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before us, we have the agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections by department heads or fellow board members?
I have none.
I'm just gonna put our Concerned Trustees, Star County Township Association. There's no further changes. The agenda will stand as amended. Nothing under the sheriff's reports. Does anybody in the crowd have anything for our detective? Okay. Nothing for the detective's report. That's nice. That'll take us to unfinished business. And just before I do that, make note that Mrs. Campbell is excused on approved leave. So, first item, unfinished business, fire station number four, 2855 Easton Street, northeast. I know this was something I brought up at the last meeting based upon the brainstorming session we did with the department head. So, I don't know if there's one of you that wants to take the lead. Is that Joe?
Yeah, I gave you guys each a drawing. We made a couple different options, and we can do as many options as the board wishes. First option has an office up front for the sheriff's department if they want to use that as a substation. That office is already there. There's a front door coming in the building, so they'd have access for that door. And we could always go in and build a privacy wall there unless they need access to the whole station, which, I don't know. There's an existing radio room there with some glass windows that we can take out and install all the fuels and oil. This way, it'll be vented, go ahead into the existing bays. The power tools there. The kitchen, which the self-explanatory will stay there. If we go back towards the host tower, there's a laundry back there. The chiefs at the existing appliances are gonna stay, so all departments can wash rags and stuff. We go through a lot of rags on the roof, and we start washing them and reusing them and save some money there. But speaking of it, Derek, he's be a great place for all the hand tools, which they have. Honey, I wasn't even aware of how many tools they had. In this other packet, you'll see that we've got a list of all the tools and equipment that he has there. The existing bunk area that was built near the real bunk. It would be a great place for all this cleaning device for the whole township, probably not the fires, because they'll probably have room at their new station. Those tables and chairs. We can build some shelving and some racks for tables and chairs that we can keep down there and anything else. This is just, everything's an option on here. I think we ought to move the parks office down there because they're gonna punch in and punch out down there. It would make it a lot easier because they are spread out once three parks, not just up at Diamond. Most of the equipment will be down there except for what's needed at Diamond will stay in the barn. And then we can build a little office down there for them, which will, at that point, really eat that office up there for, I don't know if Rob needs it or anybody that would need it. I mean, that office would be out of Diamond still in use for it instead of indoor soccer and all that up there. This open space here, I guess there's a lot of park dimensions materials, you know, like the stuff for the winter fest, the lights, all that stuff that are jammed in the barn that we can put all that stuff in that open space area there. Whatever they have, decals and signs and everything that they have. The barn will still be used for Diamond. We will not move anything that is needed at Diamond. The holes and all that stuff will all stay up there. I mean, that's the mower, the big mower and all that stuff will stay up at Diamond because we're not gonna be moving that anywhere. So, all the equipment will be in the bays, the trailers and pickups and the plows. The roadie department will probably, the roadie department will just have seasonal equipment in there and a couple sweepers and stuff, and we'll put ours in the east. They all up against the walls, so all this other bay's open. I talked to the county about salt trucks. They are possibly looking at if the board would allow two salt trucks, two routes running out of here. Nothing's been happened right now. It probably won't happen till after the first year. If that's what comes up with, we can give them spaces for trucks. They don't wanna come out of our garage. I met with Keith and Dave Torrance and Eric Raffus last week. They want to still use our salt. They know we reimburse us for salt as they use it once they make their first trip through. But if they can put two trucks down there and have easy access, they'd rather do that. So, I think one of us, they have to get us a plan before we do.
What was the process for even when they put the one down there? Because I knew just keep the truck down there was one of their concerns.
When I got there, drivers were worried about getting something. I mean, my guys backed out with plows every day, and we gave them a prime spot, it was easy. And it got to where they put their plow outside because they were afraid to back out with their plow. Just put the truck in there, and then they'd have to call supervisor over to help hook the plow up because it was sitting outside. So, anyway, my guys wouldn't have a problem if they were pulling in and out with the plows and we never had a wall. Their drivers just felt uncomfortable. And they got three drivers per route. So, you know, we had one driver for every truck. So, three different people using each truck for the county. There would be six different drivers going if we were bringing two trucks, and we would let them come in and out now, basically.
And the benefit to the township is one of the, they're gonna get these county roads out here quicker.
Correct.
Now, is there still room enough in that, those bays to store two trucks and still be able to store the park equipment and the others?
Yeah. I think there will be, I mean, we understand it's only gonna be a little bit of winter time. Their trucks are gonna be gone most of the time. Derek wanted to use some of that for repairs in the winter and stuff when they're working on trucks in one of the bays. I think we'll be all right. But until we actually get the equipment in there, I'm not gonna know if we're gonna have enough for the county, you know, so.
Joe, just when you say repairs in there?
Just on their small stuff on their mowers and their water cleaning, and, you know, they build barricades and...
They have heated rooms.
You know, and it's too good.
That old barn over there is miserable.
They don't have any water up there, you know, it's just stuff like that. I mean, I think that building would be great for right now for them. And like I said, there's two options with sheriff, don't come, he can use that office. We don't have to build another office. You know what I mean? It's what the board wants. I just wanted to give you a couple options what we see down there, just walking through their measuring stuff.
Now, you want the barn. You're not, we're not, we're gonna still use that barn. We're not gonna have that barn empty now.
There'll still be all...
In other words, we do have a building there that we could be using for just as much storage, so we're gonna use that building as much as we can and load that up also along with this.
Anything that's, yeah, Diamond, you know, heat that stuff stuffed everywhere, inside the soccer facility and stuff like that, all that we can, you know, we'll make usage of the fire station for a lot, most of that stuff. So, the barn's not, is still gonna be totally used. But in the wintertime, it's hard for those guys to work on anything up there.
No heating.
No water, you know, they can't even clean the stuff up there, you know. We're letting those lights get all, you know, get them all messed up up there. Just all like filters and oil and all that kind of stuff. It's just not an ideal situation at the barn right now.
That was the biggest concern.
With just the use of the open space in the kitchen, is that pretty much like idle space?
Yeah. It's what we could, whatever we wanted to do with it. You know, we were just looking for as much storage space.
So, even if somebody said, hey, looking for space to run or whatever, you could turn them up onto that? If it's somebody from the public or given what we have down there, would that be advised against?
I would feel...
Yeah, go ahead, bro.
Most comfortable, obviously for me and the parks guys down there, that frees up space in the community room and some of the other areas at the facility to continue to host paid events at the facility where we can track them and keep track of them and service them properly. Because when you get to Fire Station Four to properly accommodate usage for that facility, we have to make it ADA compatible with those restrooms, which aren't currently. So, we're looking at an inordinate amount of cost to do that. Where we have a facility that is ADA compatible right now, we would just be freeing up more space and time to utilize it. When you mentioned Derek's office, there's several different options there. We can make it a meeting space. We can make it a storage space because we have an inordinate amount of large events. The concession has limited space for storage when it comes to that product. So, obviously, if the folks that used to work out of the barn are working out of Station Four, it frees up our end for our concessionaires and our programming. Our supervisors will continue to use the second floor office because that's where I prefer them to be. They've got the best idea of the mezzanine in the field from there. But other things could be done there as well. So, that would be, I think, where the programming piece comes in. Meeting space as far as people that may need an hour's time and a table, fine, but I think when you open it up to rental, you have to have ADA compatible and we're, that's an inordinate amount of cost to just take over a building. It could be serviceable in a lot of other ways to get used out of it.
Chief Snyder was great enough to give us a breakdown of utility expenses for that station for the past year. There's a sheet there with all the utility expenses. This is for 24/7 if that place is, you know, somebody's down there, which wouldn't happen, you know, once we go, like time order, we can take that out of there, I'm sure, or public waste, we can throw away with that. And I think all the other utilities will be lower because of the limited use that it will have eight hours a day instead of 24 hours a day, you know, that's down there now. But it is still a lot, something that we're gonna have to pay utilities on, so.
Now, is that something where, just from the utility, we look for each department, to cover part of that, cover part of that based upon use, or are you guys looking at...
Well, the primary use in general.
Public use would be parks and, I...
Well, public service.
Ones that sit in something, I will.
I'm just asking, I didn't, I mean, we don't, I'm not worried about it right now, but just...
Well, we see here that we have a budget and see how we haven't been able to get to that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, that would fall on your...
I think Mr. Lino had a great idea about doing a work session down there and taking a walk down there so you guys can actually see what's down there. Other sets of eyes are always great, you know, not just what we're seeing from our end. Hopefully, this'll, you know, let you see what's down there and where we can go from here with it.
Did we answer the question about the co-mingling of fire, you know, because it totally technically don't play fire? We're gonna now be in the life of Parks General Fund and the Road Department. I think I would ask a question before if we were going to look into the budgeting aspect there. Can we get an idea whether we can actually integrate that facility without the township building?
Yeah, I mean, I think we can integrate it. The question is how to fund it. And I think that, I don't think it's a matter of how we can use it, how we want to, but you just wanna make sure that fire levy funds are going for fire purposes and that kind of thing. I don't think that's, you agree with that, don't you, Anthony?
Yeah, I agree. It's a talent picture. It's on the board, it's not by the fire department. Right now, he uses fire funds to pay those services and things, but as long as the fire's not in there, you're not using the fire funds. So, you know, you're gonna have a problem.
That reflects and goes back to this building. Now, that building's a completely empty building.
Right. Exactly.
Still on the township, a lot of the fire that existed and is now occupied by the state.
The only thing you have to be aware of is that the funds that are designated for certain things are being used for those things.
Yes.
Okay.
So, I mean, as far as what will revisit this, once Chief ultimately knows his transition and doing what we've got, three options identified on, they'll have to...
Good start.
Yes, I want to thank the chief, he's already made some room down there, and I've got my two sweepers down there already packed in the corner for me, so I didn't have to drain all of it. It's still heated down there, so, I don't know. We did that last week, I think, yeah.
I know, we don't have all their insurance on the building, which is really minimal. I talked to Dave Craft during that, and I think it was me talking less than $1,000 a year.
Takes us to the next item under unfinished business, Cloud 2014 Membership. This was just placed on the agenda for the sake, we asked to hold it over to last go round, but yet...
My understanding is the other larger township than Star County are going to renew their membership with Cloud. But I think this is something we should continue to monitor going forward as to whether Cloud is actually representing through the OTA the larger township concerns. What Cloud does essentially is lobbies the state legislature for issues that are concerning larger townships. And the concern in the past has been the OTA and Cloud have been focusing more on circumstances that affect smaller populated townships than the issues that are affecting larger urban townships. But I think we should monitor the progress that this organization is making going forward to make sure that it's actually representing the issues facing communities like ourselves and, because the OTA should be focusing on those other issues with the smaller townships. But since the other townships are, I guess, re-upping, I think we should stay on board so that we can actively participate.
Awesome. Also move on, unfinished business number two.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
As a reminder, our first meeting in December on the 10th is the work session prior to our meeting. We're gonna have the joint meeting between the Plain Local School Board and our Board of Trustees that will be here at Plain Township Hall at 5:20. So, that closes out unfinished business. Nothing under new business. I turn it over to Mr. Flex for the fiscal officer's report.
Thank you, Justice Haas. Fiscal Officer Number One is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of pending warrants in an amount of $232,6169 is attached here, too.
So, move. Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Two is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to authorize the payment of a regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
Second. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to authorize the payment for the following medical claims as provided by Alcare.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Four is just a investment report. Fiscal Officer Number Five is a request for a transfer of liquor license from Crosses to Kent Pizza LLC, DVA Crosses on 30th Street.
Is this a change in...
Change in ownership.
Do we have any reason to hold this one over? The only reason I can bring it up is because earlier last year, Dave was with it, they were busted and was without the, without the ability to serve alcohol, I think, for a period of a couple months.
That's right.
So... And that was, granted, that was the old ownership. I'm just... Yeah, I believe that's, I think that was just a tax issue.
Yeah, and they ultimately did get it renewed.
Yeah, the old owner did get it renewed. The new owners are the ones that lobbies. I know Lisa did send an email out to the sheriff's office and we did respond to them that they had no complaints and they had no reason for an objection, so. This is just a request that you guys would like me to, I'd say, pass it. Pass it on. Okay, don't hear it.
Fiscal Officer Number Six is just an FYI. Obviously, at this time of the year, the liquor licenses for all establishments come up for renewal. This is just letting us know that if we have any objections to any of the process that we need to take, again, spoke with Lisa on this and the sheriff's office, and we haven't had any complaints, I don't think, about any establishments with liquor licenses. If something comes up here before the end of the year, we just need to make sure that we notify liquor control if we're gonna file an objection. Fiscal Officer Number Seven, this is a request for a resolution for longevity for Jason Kuhn. It's a, his 2011, 12, and 13, his years of service were short by one year. So, this is essentially a resolution to allow us to go ahead and pay him an additional $50 for each of those years for the 2011, 2012, and 2013.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. Is that Mr. Lino?
Yeah.
Roll call. Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Eight is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to authorize the following transfers.
So, move.
Second. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Nine is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to authorize a refund as follows for overpayments for emergency medical services requested by Ohio Biller.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And finally, Fiscal Officer Number Ten would be a request for a resolution for the Plain Township Fiscal Officer to request another additional amended certificate of estimated resources. This would be for adding an additional $10,000 into the capital project over at the fire station, just to ensure if there's any change orders that could come up before the end of the year, that there's sufficient funds there.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And that concludes my portion for today's meeting. Thank you, Mr. Flex. Administrator, we've got the 2014 OTA Winter Conference. This is just to authorize our department heads and elected officials to attend the Winter Conference in Columbus, February 12th through the 15th, 2014, and authorize payment of $50 per registration fee, lodging, and reimbursement for food mileage and parking for those attending according to our travel policy. So, move.
Second.
Discussion. That's just a simple note that we've done years past. Let's make sure we're not doubling up on the same classes, make sure we're getting the most out of it for the township. I know some good stuff's come back out of it. Joe, you noted from the salt spreaders to the beet juice to the micro-surfacing and so forth.
I get something out of it every year, it seems like, something like that.
So, bring back who's going, just make sure, let us know which can be taken down there. Roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Okay, that closes Administrator. It takes us to fire. I'm gonna turn that over to Chief Snyder.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Lino. Item number one is a resolution to purchase, give us a four-striker model, 6506 power pro ambulance cots, striker EMS, not to exceed $80,000. This is attached to BWC grant by W. Schumberg, worked with BWC to obtain $40,000 grant to pay for some of that, so, so part of that will be paid with that grant.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. Just as a point of clarification, could work on the grant, I mean, that's money that's not coming directly out of our pocket, and then ultimately, this will help reduce...
Back injuries.
Back injuries and so forth instead of having to be annoying lift folks out there where there's dry surface and just weight, or if it's slippery surface and so forth, so that probably will help us in our workers' comp raises as well. And Chief, I think, just...
Safety, think, Mark.
Just a little note of the safety message for residents. You and I had discussed that the old units are gonna go into the backup EMS unit.
Yeah, one of our older backup medical trucks that doesn't have a striker cot, its cot's probably 15 years old and so that needs to be replaced. So, one of those will go in there, one's gonna go into the gator, which is just finished, I believe is being finished up. And so, one of those cots, we'll have a couple spares in case we have one break down, so we have to pull them back or something.
Roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Thank you. Item number two is to authorize a purchase, payment for Easton Constructions installing two cat bases and sprint, create tops loads of new station, not to exceed 41, $2,168.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes. That's all, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. It's gonna take us to the road department. Turn that over to Joe.
Item number one is a resolution to authorize the posting of no parking when smoke exceeds two inches on Norrington Circle, south off of Brenton. We received a call, Mr. Lino's in and I did, from the residents there, the condo association wrote us a letter asking us to do that because all the condos are full now and it is a tough circle to fly, so I don't have a problem with living in those condos.
Well, I used to live in those condos on Norrington, and people do park in the street, so that's definitely needed.
Let's let it lie.
So, move.
Second. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Item two, I've been talking for a while about some outside contractors being on call and hourly maintenance contracts with them, and Eric's been working on that. He has the resolutions for all of them and top of the contracts.
Is that handled?
Yeah, it's over.
The, I put blanks in the resolutions and hourly rates I left blank, and most of the parties that gave us information and contracts put a one-year maintenance contract price. For example, for an electrical contractor, there's Shop Electric, and they have an hourly rate of 70, and on their one-year maintenance contract is $68 an hour, so there's a break there. But this is the breakdown of who put information out there for us. And in some, there's only one, like for electrical and all that kind of stuff, and some, there's a couple, but with a pretty significant price difference.
Tough getting more than so many contractors calling back.
Yeah, so, we're not looking...
They're wanting to work and do it for us and...
And a lot of them just figure, well, you'll need us, you'll call us. And so, they sit back and aren't willing to entertain something like this. So, this is what we've come up with, and by we, I mean Joe, because I didn't do any of it. So, thanks to his hard work, we do have some proposals here for you. I've got the contracts here that go with them, but that's the pricing sheet there, which is probably most important.
Absolutely.
Everybody on that list told me they'd be here very hard. Actually, we had a problem up at Diamond Park last week with some lighting, and I called Shop because we needed somebody anyhow. He was there within an hour, and within three hours, it was all fixed. So, I mean, he got somebody there right now and took care of the inside soccer dump. We had some lighting problems, so. Let's figure that was a good time to test.
So, my, Scott, my advice would be to pick who you're gonna go with during the discussion segment, and then you, as the person reading, can kind of fill in the blanks, however you see fit there.
On the fir-, first one, just for discussion, is the roof would be two A roofing contract and...
Pinnacle roofing.
Pinnacle roofing.
Chamber business.
Okay. And an hourly rate of 58, and that one-year maintenance contract is parts and cost plus five. 5%. So, we make a motion that be resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, start kind of higher approve entering into the attached contracts to secure the stated pricing for pinnacle roofing to be on-call roofing contractor for Plain Township at an hourly rate of $58 per hour and a one-year maintenance contract. It parts and costs plus 5%.
Per hour.
Per hour.
Okay.
Second.
Parts and cost plus 5%?
Yes. We'll provide the attachment. Just any further discussion?
Roll call. Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
2B, 2B is the garage door contract, and what we would do there is approve entering into the attached contract to secure the stated pricing for action door to be the on-call garage door contractor for Plain Township, an hourly rate of $98 per hour and a one-year maintenance contract at $86.24 per hour. That's one year plus a 12% discount on all parts. Second discussion.
Can I comment around?
Yeah, go ahead, sorry, Joe.
Wouldn't believe how expensive it is to get garage doors fixed. Especially commercially. That price there was unbelievable compared to what some of them, I got $150 an hour.
$150.
They're doctors or something.
I know, scienziologists.
That is a heck of a price that we got from them, and they've worked on doors in the township.
Roll call. Who was on the second on that? I thought it was J. Good.
Yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
2C is a heating and cooling contract, and is, Plain Township Board of Trustees start kind of higher approve entering into the attached contract to secure the stated pricing for Rollins Heating and Cooling, to be on-call furnace heating and cooling contractor for Plain Township at an hourly rate of $55 per hour and a one-year maintenance contract at $55 per hour. I'll second that. Discussion. I would just note, should this one may not be available within, you know, sufficient time, we would go with the secondary, which is Rollins Heating and Cooling, at $75 per hour, and then one-year maintenance contract rate of $67.50 per hour, so. Roll call.
Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
2D is the plumbing contract, hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to approve entering into the attached contract to secure the stated pricing for Mulally Plumbing, to be the on-call plumbing contractor for Plain Township at an hourly rate of $70 per hour and a one-year maintenance contract at $60 per hour for one year. Second discussion.
Roll call. Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
And the last one is electrical, and hereby resolved by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Star County, Ohio, to approve entering into the attached contracts to secure the stated pricing for Shop Electric, to be the on-call electrical contractor for Plain Township at an hourly rate of $70 per hour and a one-year maintenance contract at $68 per hour for one year. Second. Discussion.
Roll call. Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Thanks for getting that all button down and bringing that to a close, Joe.
I'll give copies of, you know, a spreadsheet for all departments, so if they need something, they can directly call these guys instead of have to go through, if I'm not here or something, they can, I'll give all the partner heads.
Just as a side note, this is the outcome of what the board agreed to do collectively in moving forward with the Public Service Department and repurposing one of the positions. Because when we assess the cost and so forth, we determined essentially everything would have to go wrong in a year in every facility to spend that same amount of salary, so on a year-over-year basis, there will be compounded savings here. Zoning Department, Mr. Paul?
Yes, gentlemen, zoning number one, we have nuisance abatement at 3222 Royal Avenue Northeast. This is a buildup of trash people moved out. Yeah, it's not pretty.
Second discussion.
Roll call. Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Danny, is that also Royal baking?
Yes. The neighbors had people reasonable moved out and just left everything.
It's like you threw everything out the back door, or you got in your car.
Pretty much.
Danny, on the one picture, it shows that the.
The street door. The door was locked.
Okay.
The door in the house was locked, I cracked that right away.
Okay.
Did we, did we, all right, roll call. Yes, I did.
Item number two, we have nuisance abatements, there are two at the 1860 Whipple Avenue address, this was four through the grass and jungle in the backyard, and as well as the car in the front yard. Or for the, did the grass and the car that actually been towed away by the owner.
Oh, wow, that's a world of difference. That's huge. I'm going to move on, zoning 2A through E.
Discussion. Roll call. Mr. Lena?
Yes.
Mr. Hawes?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
And I would just like to, once again, thank the crews for the work that they put in over the course of summer. I mean, we still have a few nuisances coming on board, but the vast majority of the, of the major problems are done, and thanks to Joe and his crews, and Derek and his crews, and everybody for doing a fantastic job on getting those taken care of.
I notice a tedious time concerning a very manual.
Yeah, a lot of them, they had one that was done just last week. It was a huge brush pile. You know, so they took nearly a half day to just get it cleaned up out of the backyard or the back there, and it accumulated a little bit of everything over, over a few years, I believe, so that was, once again, thank you to them. And zoning number three is the update on 1218 Rushmore Avenue. We've been looking at this, that the fourth year. We had discussed the issue of, this is the construction material in the fence. The photographs that you have are taken along Brushmont Circle. This is the street that runs along the south side of the property, showing fence construction. It's a shadow box type fence that has panel on one side, and then your flip-flop on the opposite side. And as you go down, you can see that the fence has hung this morning, is not completed, which was also part of a letter that we had issued back on October 23rd.
Our, our last, or our meeting, where we said the fence had, was that 30 days or was it?
That was, it was 30 days. The 30 days of that letter was dated October 23rd.
So essentially, we're at, we're at 30 days.
Correct.
Have you been able to speak with the individual or the main fence?
I spoke with the individual, her concern was trying to get it solved with the fence along Brushmont, and putting out the, going around to get from the side, and then you can see that she does have the framework started on the, what would be the easternmost side of the property, that would be the next to the last tow, in order to put the panels up. She fully intends to finish it, but they said doing it is pretty much our self.
Just for the record, then, Trustee Hawes, I'm not trying to open up a can of worms, but you and I, just so you know that that debris that we have to be moved to the back of the corner has not been moved. You and I both went on record and asked that that should be, we'd like to have it picked up, and you can't see it now because of the fences there, but if you look at the back side of the fence, it's still open. If you go all the way down to the last view.
Correct.
That's still open, so those neighbors can still look through and see that debris that's in that corner that we asked to be moved, that still stayed there. And I thought we both, we had both stayed on record that, that part of the deal was to pick up those and put them in the back corner of that fence, as if we would have had stored wood, we'd have it back in there, but that debris is, I went past it myself, it's still in that corner, it wasn't moved, she's built and finished the fence around it, and I thought that was, my argument last week was, you know, she's building that fence around it, but that debris still should have been moved and put, stored in the back, so just for the record, it has not been moved, she just finished and put that gate up, but it's still there, but the people that live in the back of that, end of that coast, if they can still look through that fence and see all that debris in that corner.
Given the worst, currently, the construction materials are closer to the house. That is correct.
Yeah, which we, that was the one we stayed on record and wanted to be moved, was never moved, just built.
Outside of that, though, too, I mean, we said 30 days to get this thing turned around, completed its path. What, I think we've been fair, fair and reasonable. From your perspective, any recommendations there, for Danny?
Oh, go ahead. I think that what I said two meetings ago is still true, which is, we want to be in the business of going in and stacking up, and, you know, we talked about that, and if you do, that's your call. The letter, I went through some of the letters today with Danny, and the one that we, that we're talking about has to have this stuff out of public view, or it's constituted nuisance, because from my understanding, talking with Al, and talking with some others, is that this stuff has been there for years. So that's, I think, where the crux of the issue comes from in terms of the surrounding property owners. Now, what we have to decide, what you have to decide, is, do you, what is it that we're abating, and how are we abating it? And I talked with Al about this today. If you declare this nuisance, what you're essentially saying is that those things are still in public view because there is still that open area of the fence, and so therefore, what do you want to do with it? That's really the big question. You stacking it up and making it neat, is what you want to do with it? I suppose it's within your purview to do that, although if that fence remains unfinished, it's still going to be in public view. So the big question is, if that's, if that's not what you want to do, do you take this stuff off-site, are we storing it? It obviously has value, we talked about that, I don't think that's a good idea. So, basically tonight, you're going to decide, do we declare it a nuisance, and if we do, what's the abatement procedure? That's the decision before the board.
I mean, as a point of record, though, this is just an update, it's not even our agenda is an abatement.
Oh, yeah, there's a resolution.
Yes, there's a resolution there, and the, it was to be taken care of, it was in the letter that was sent to the owner that it was not taken care of by this meeting, it could be declared, if it had not been moved from public view.
And then a lot of the public defense builders.
No.
No.
So if it was satisfied at board to have the crew go in there, make it neat, toss what's actually debris and put her building materials somewhere where she could access them, but more where you're talking about, then, then you could, you could do that, and the other alternatives probably aren't as enticing, in my humble opinion.
What are we doing about the fence, not being, we're not much on candid about the fence, not being.
Now, it seems that she's working on it, but that's something I guess we'll just have to monitor, and I looked today, and I, I think that was part of our idea, was to get this process started, and it kind of has been, so it's been effective from that standpoint, but as far as from the zoning perspective.
Well, if you look at the fence, Danny, I think you said you went out there and measured.
Correct.
I mean, our, I think our, our rings allow.
Eight feet.
Eight feet, and how tall are those posts?
At the, the fence itself averages just a little bit under six feet. The posts at each panel are just right at six feet. The, if you go back up to the gates, which I guess would be, the first couple of, first photo, and then the second photo, you'll see a couple of high round posts. The highest one, I guess that would be the one, actually, the one that's the highest is one on the first picture on the right-hand side, that's at eight feet, two inches. So that was, that's two inches over the maximum height of the fence, you know, or gate posts are, I can see about six gate posts there are right about eight feet, eight feet one, eight feet, eight feet two is the highest. The fence itself is right about six feet. As far as it being, as far as the fence being too high, it isn't.
That's what we're talking about doing. I'm just talking about wanting to relocate those materials where it's supposed to be.
That's what you have talked about.
And I think, as Mr. Reeves wrote up, I guess if we, if we ask the crews to move everything to clear the property, it's still going to be, fortunately, it's still going to be in view until the fence is completed. And right now, it's, right now, it's pretty much out of view, and we're visiting by the house.
I mean, the whole thing of this is to get this out of public view. Fence isn't complete, no matter where it's moved, it's going to be visible. So my main opinion, according to the letter that we sent out, she's not compliant, because number one, it's still in public view, regardless of where it's moved to, in fact, because the fence is incomplete. You said there was nothing we could do about the completion of the fence, but it doesn't change the fact that she's not compliant, based on your, who's given. So that's what.
All right, the initial, the initial letter that we sent to her, if you recall, we had declared it a nuisance, and she asked for an appeal. And then on, at the meeting on October 22nd, we passed Resolution 13693, that gave her, that's the one that gave her the time on the appeal, and in that letter, it stated that to move stored construction materials on your property to an inconspicuous location or to a location that would be concealed from public view by the fence curling under construction within two weeks of the date of this correspondence. The board is also requiring you to complete construction of the fence within 30 days of the date of this correspondence. And again, of course, the fence obviously has not been completed. And then at our last meeting, it was, it was told to, again, said the standard seven-day warning letter, and it was construction material, then it said, please arrange and comply within seven days of the date of this letter, and moving all construction materials out of public view.
I think we stated, we did, we stated out of view, but I just, again, for the record, we, in the minutes that we pulled, we did state that that debris in the corner was to be moved, and I know that fence isn't down in the back, but we wanted to move to the back in the corner. I know you bring that up, and we did state, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
And we did state on record, and Trustee Hawes is on record also, that yes, Mr. Lena, I agree, we did state that that material should be moved, not stayed in that corner. Again, we didn't tell anyone. This could be, this could be great, well, people just start building fences. I talked to our administrator, she said, great, tall grass, build a fence around it, junk cars, build a fence around it, that's the precedence that we're going to start. Trustee Hawes and I both went on record and stated debris in the corner was to be moved, and what we do, we allow people to build fences around it, yes, it's obviously on the line, but there, that debris still stands. So, and I don't know which way we're going, but I'm just saying that it's amazing how we say things and things, it's just, it's amazing. We say things, they don't get done, it's like we either got deaf ears, or I don't know what goes on, but it's not the way a township, I think, should be operating, all right? I think we should be working together as a team, it just doesn't seem to be moving. I think we should be working together as a team that just doesn't seem to be moving it. Especially we had two trustees go on record and made a statement.
Well, three, I agree. I'm gonna make the following motion. I'm gonna move adoption of zoning number three, A. Whereas a public hearing was held on November twenty-sixth, two thousand thirteen by Plain Township Board Trustees regarding the property conditions at twenty-eight, twelve-eighteen Brushmore Avenue Northwest, Stark County. Whereas Renee Strauss has failed to demonstrate satisfactory progress in correcting the violations above. Whereas the Plain Township Board Trustees has provided the owner of the property with notice and opportunity to be heard on this matter. Now therefore being heard by its resolve by the Plain Township Board Trustees, Stark County, Ohio. That, one, the debris constitutes a nuisance under Highway Code Section five-oh-five-eighty-seven. Two, the nuisance shall be abated, controlled, removed according to the procedures outlined in RSC Section oh-five-oh-five-eighty-seven. And three, notice of this decision will be provided to the property owner and any other lien holders of record thereon.
Second, discussion.
Let's keep one thing in mind. We all know sitting up here that this, these conditions have continued on for the better part of a year and a half. Property owners, we've given ample opportunity to rectify this issue on our own regard. As the resolution says, we've given her the opportunity to be heard. We've discussed this matter in three subsequent meetings now. The property owner herself has failed to even appear in front of the board to give us her personal viewpoint and position on this personally in front of us on record. She has refused to come in front of the board, which I think says a lot in itself. Number three, if we allow this to, to, to continue, I agree. We're setting a precedent here in that that means that anybody that's in violation of the township, they're just gonna be able to construct this rickety-rack thing around this house and then supposedly be in compliance. She's not in compliance. The debris wasn't moved. It's still, it's still in view. The fence is not constructed. She's been given every opportunity to rectify this. I think the board should pass this resolution, give her seven days to remove it or move the materials, or we'll do it for.
Further discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.
That concludes the meeting, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Paul. Which is gonna take us to Parks and Facilities, Mr. Ice.
Yes, it was brought to my attention last week early that the lettering on the Snyder Park sign, which was built has not been purchased or did. So I talked with Chief Snyder, where he got his, and called that company. And then we called some other companies. We got four quotes here. The first quote was the owner of this company, he said he wanted to send it. Those are acrylic cut letters. Now, I don't know if we're something we pull up into, to use them. They're demounted the same way, same size, but they are acrylic. All the other quotes are for metal letters, similar, almost same as the fire departments or the signs was, you know, pretty much same, because I think that was what the idea was when we initially built the sign, right?
Yeah, you get a far greater consistency.
So our letters are a little bigger for Snyder Park, but we talked about that, you know. So there are your quotes. I don't know which one the board wants to go. The, the lowest quote was Midwest signs. These are all install prices, both double-sided. Lou, I might have told you something wrong this morning, because Acres only did it one-sided. They had to call back and they had to requote us today, so.
So which was the Midwest? Are they putting the metal or the vinyl?
Cause they're putting the metal.
Yeah, they got five-inch and the nine, so five-inch metal, nine-inch metal. Chief, just as a quick question, are your, are your letters, are they painted over, painted metal?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, these acrylic letters.
It's like a polymer.
It's like a polymer plastic. They're being wholly in color. I know you have a roughly three-hundred-dollar difference in cost between Acres for those. Are the eighteen-hundred dollars for the metal ones for Acres? Question is, we want to save the three-hundred dollars with the longevity of the, how are they gonna hold up versus the metal?
I, I guess, we don't even know what the longevity is on the metal ones. I mean, they could take, take a beating with the weather, and anything else, I guess. I don't know, Chief.
Acres came in less on the acrylic ones.
If I may, we. Mr. G. Basis, we're down to the park district. We did some acrylic signs and they held up pretty well.
They're mounted exactly the same way. They're just acrylics.
They're just plastic and.
Yeah, natural side with the chief.
Yeah, they'll be white, so they don't look the same, but one will be acrylic and one will be.
I didn't know what type of, what type of type actually is.
The type should be similar. Personally, I, I think the acrylic is willing to hold up. You know, if one breaks, you know, a letter breaks, a letter needs to replace, you have to replace a letter or either way, the difference is upfront, we're saving almost one hundred bucks.
And they're studied the same way that Berkwood. Sound good to you, acrylic?
I'm gonna make a motion that we move forward with the Acres sign, acrylic proposal in the amount of one-thousand-five-hundred-twenty-five dollars, where it notes nine-inch lettering for Snyder Park and five-inch lettering for Plain Township.
What second is?
Discussion?
Yeah, just one favor, Mr. Haas, so they told, everybody told me it'd be three to four weeks before we can get it, so. And Lou, that sign is low, by the way.
Did you put a level on it? Looks like it's sinking.
Well, it's still doing the old.
Roll, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.
And we'll get that over.
Thanks, Joe. That closes Parks and Facilities. Turn it over to Mr. Steinberg, Parks and Programming.
Number one, gentlemen, just a simple update for the Winterfest. We're scheduled, as you know, for Saturday, December seventh, from six to nine. We have the tent generously sponsored by Pauline Campbell and Williams Law Firm, as well as the IBI Group in Little Rock, so we thank them. Our programming and timeline is finalized. We have performers from the Jazz Dolls, who have been authorized to put on a Fire with a Hun performance. Oakwood Middle School Select Choir, Bonfires, the Plain Local Ranch, or the Stark Library. We'll be doing arts and crafts with the kids. We'll have concessions. Obviously, a gentleman in a red suit will make an appearance, thanks to another department in the area. And I wanted to thank Derek's crew immensely, because they have added to the displays tenfold with materials and lighting on site that they've already had. So no purchase was made for the enhancements that will be taking place this year. Elegant ice designs will be there. Lumberjack designs will be there with the wood carving again. So a few enhancements and just general reminders that folks come out.
Now, could we make up the shortage in the?
Let me check on that tomorrow morning. I know that the bill is set, so let me check on that tomorrow morning. And I'll forward an email.
The sponsorships.
Yes, yes, sir, I will. And I appreciate the offer as well. Number two, we've engaged with cross-country and track coach from Glennock High School, Scott Farrell. We're gonna begin in earnest the partnership with Plain Local Schools on K through six programming beginning as early as summer of two thousand fourteen. So this is the, the flagship jumping off point for the new programming partnership with the schools. And we're gonna build this as the protocol for moving forward with others. That's all I got.
Thank you. Nothing I'll do longer after?
Not this evening. Thank you.
Communications, the first thing we have is that Stark Parks installs pedestrian crossing signs. I know this is already posted out on our website, as well as our social media, Facebook, but I'll read it really quick. Stark County, Ohio, Stark Parks has utilized the Transportation Safety Grant for three bicycle pedestrian crossing signs as part of the Hoover Trail in North Canton and Middle Branch Trail in Plain Township. Installed by ODOT District Four, the project was completed with cooperation of Plain Township, the Stark County Engineers Office. The Middle Branch and Hoover Trails have become popular destinations for trail users. And the signals will promote safety on two of our most heavily traveled roads, said Bob Font, Stark Parks Director. Two push-button devices on each side of the Glennock campus, Easton Street and Schneider Street, and one device at Marquard Avenue were designed to reduce driver and trail user confusion and increase safety. After a trail user pushes the button, the signal lights flash for twelve seconds to warn oncoming vehicles that a walker or bicyclist is crossing the road. Trail users should still use caution and make sure it's safe before crossing the street. The installed signals are rectangular, rapid flashing beacons, and were installed as part of a pilot project studying the best methods to use for trail crossings. A recent study of the RRFB used in St. Petersburg, Florida, shows drivers yielding compliance in excess of eighty percent versus less than two to five percent prior to the installation of the signals as we continue to expand the trail system across the county. Stark Parks continues to seek ways to improve the safes, the safety of all trail users, said Font. We hope trail users and drivers both benefit from the new signage. The mission of Stark County Park District is to acquire, preserve, and develop natural areas for passive recreation, conservation, education, and nature appreciation. The park district maintains more than eighty miles of hiking, bicycling, and equestrian trails. Information on parks, trails, rental facilities, and parks and programs is available at www.starkparks.com. The second communication we have here is in regards to the new Lions Club. I know, was it a meeting or two meetings ago, we had a representative join us. And their announcement is, we're excited to announce that we are forming a new Lions Club in Plain Township. There will be two informational meetings at the Plain Township Hall located twenty-six-hundred Easton Street Northeast, Kent, Ohio, on Monday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and fourteen, and Monday, February third, two thousand and fourteen. Meetings will start at six-thirty PM and end by eight PM. Bring your spouse, relative, or friend to come and learn more about the Lions Club organization and what they can offer our community. Membership is open to men and women eighteen years or older. Light refreshment and drinks will be available. That concludes communications. Takes us to a portion of our meeting, public speaks. Is there anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the board? Head out close, public speaks, under Concerns Trustees. I just wanted to note, Thursday, December twelfth, Stark County Township Association will be having our, our holiday party over Skylit Pines. It'll begin at six PM. Dominion's a sponsor. They've actually got, our program's gonna be by name of Max Smith. He's a shale manager. He's gonna talk about the actual infrastructure that Dominion's putting in place, more, more importantly, outside of the program. It will be the elections for next year's two thousand and fourteen, so Al Lu or Anthony, if you've got any interest.
How nominees got hot? I'll make sure I show up for the nomination.
So that's, that's all I've got. If you guys have anything else?
I have nothing. I just will get going, Rick, or, um, tell the chief, everything over the fire station, weather permitting, I know it looks phenomenal. And, you know, the landscaping, all the stuff that you've got, he's not out there. Looks great in-house. I mean, I think you and Chuck and another person did most of that stuff yourself.
We had, actually, the road guys and park guys out there, I believe, too, but it was a, it was a team effort.
I tell you, it looks great. It looks great.
Looking forward to grand opening on that.
We'll discuss, you know, I'll be giving a second email out, too, and discuss.
Concerns at the fiscal office, as you flex, I think. Takes us up to approval of the minutes for November twelfth, two thousand and thirteen. Also move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Lino?
Yes.
There's a need for executive session.
I've got one here, if you don't mind.
Read it.
Yep, executive session for the purpose consideration of, one, the employment of a public employee official, and one, F, compensation of a public employer official.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion, roll call. Who's that second? Al Lu. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. G. Basis?
Yes.